All right, welcome to the November ninth, two thousand and sixteen, the Shoba Regional School Committee regular meeting. We have a decent agenda tonight, I think, a couple of tough discussions, but we'll be able to move them quickly as long as our participants. I'm calling the meeting to order at six oh six P. M. Do we have any citizens' comments? Nope. Okay. And then Nick, you want to give us your student report out, please?
Over the last two weeks, we have not had that much school, therefore, there is not very much to report. On Wednesday, November twenty-third this year, there will be a half day. This, this is a change from past years on the day that students will be released early. Students will be released early at ten forty A. M. We will be having a school-wide Liptub, Liptub, and our annual pep rally prior to dismissal. For those of you who do not know what a Liptub is, here's a short video to, from Nishoba's two thousand and thirteen Liptub with special thanks to the Chieftain Press.
Well, thank you, Nick.
You're welcome. It's a, it's available on YouTube. If you Google like Nishoba Regional High School Liptub, it should pop up. In other news, The Matchmaker is coming to Nishoba. It was inspired by, it inspired the Broadway musical Hello, Dolly. Performances will take place on December second at seven thirty and December third at two and seven thirty P. M. In the auditorium. To order tickets in advance, please visit nishobodrama dot com. Last week, at the Student Advisory Council, one of the topics that was discussed were lockers. Dr. Graham informed the Advisory Council that there were several lockers that were broken in some way. Some of them don't close easily and don't stay closed. My locker, for example, is not able to be locked with a regular lock, for the door has been mangled and bent to the point where the locker does not fit. The Student Advisory Council was informed that a fix to this problem is in the process. And that concludes my opening statement.
Thank you. When is the next Liptub scheduled?
I don't think that's been announced yet, but I can check. Oh, it's been announced.
November twenty.
Yeah, it's the day, it's the half day before Thanksgiving.
So catch up with me, I want to ask you something about it around. Okay, thanks Nick, really appreciate that. Okay, so we've got a few things in new business, but let's start with Ms. Rich, our athletic director for the district, is here to give us an athletic update. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. I want to start by going over some of our fall athletic updates, because we're in the middle of playoffs and things are going extremely well right now. Our golf team finished their season at eleven and five, and this year they were co-league champs. And we had Junior Cam Roberts, who represented Nishoba in the Division One State Golf Meet this year. Volleyball had a record of sixteen and four and went ten and oh in the league, and so they were undefeated league champions. This is their second year in a row being league champions. The team hosted Milford on Monday in a quarterfinal game, but fell to a very strong Milford, Milford squad. The cheerleading team won their league championship last weekend up at Murdoch High School, and they'll be competing in the regional competition this Sunday in Marlboro. Our boys and girls cross-country teams will be competing in the district championship this Saturday at Gardner Municipal Golf Course. Our girls soccer team finished the season with an eleven-three and four record. They were league champions, and they're seeded second in the playoffs. The girls defeated Shrewsbury last night at home, four nothing, in the quarterfinals. They're gonna be playing Marlboro tomorrow night in the semifinals at five P. M. at Doyle Field, and the winner of that game will play in the Central Mass District Championship on Sunday at Nishoba. Field hockey team finished their regular season at thirteen-two and three. They were co-league champions and the third seed in Central Mass. Nishoba defeated Shrewsbury three nothing in the quarterfinals, and then went on to defeat Wesbro three nothing in the semifinals. And Nishoba's heading back to the Central Mass District Title Game for the third straight year. Nishoba will play Marlboro on Friday, eleven A. M. at Grafton High School for the district title. Our football team defeated Dougherty last Friday night in the district semifinals, and they advanced to the district title game. Nishoba will face Marlboro again on Saturday at noon time at Doyle Field in Leominster. And this will be their second year going to the district title game. We're also, we're hosting our fifth Athletic Hall of Fame Ceremony on Sunday, November twentieth, at the International. This year, we're inducting seven student athletes, one coach, one contributor, and the nineteen seventy-six field hockey team. This fall, Nishoba's hosting our Thanksgiving football game. And this is new this year, as we are playing Clinton for the first time on Thanksgiving in many, many years. Both schools are looking forward to this. And actually, right now, our booster clubs are working together as they've created a commemorative T- shirt, a long-sleeved T-shirt to wear that both fronts the same, saying about our Thanksgiving game, and on the back it says Go Chieftains or Go Gales. And it's nicely our two towns and our booster clubs working together on that. So fall right now, like I said, is going very well. We've got three big games versus Marlboro in the next three days, and could be coming home with potentially some district titles. Winter sports are right around the corner. Winter's gonna start the Monday after Thanksgiving. We're currently doing our online registration and getting ready for that to start. Also, in our league, our mid-watch A.D.s, we're all working on our spring schedules. Spring sports don't begin in March, but we're trying to finish all those schedules. We also, at the high school, we have a boys' lacrosse session that is currently open. Right now, just to give you an update on where we are with that, our search committee and I conducted interviews last week. The committee will be moving some finalists forward to meet with Dr. Graham and I. With the holidays coming up, we're hoping to have this position filled at the latest, the first week in December, once we get those finalist interviews and, you know, background checks and everything completed. And that is it right now for athletics.
Thank you so much, I'm gonna open it up for questions, but I appreciate you giving us the update on the lacrosse coach.
No problem.
Because I know that that's of interest to, to a lot of people.
Yep, absolutely.
So, thanks for giving us that update.
You're welcome.
All right, anybody have any questions? Neil.
Dude, could you explain a little bit about the Hall of Fame Ceremony for those people who don't know about the Hall of Fame Ceremony?
Yep, so, this will be my third Hall of Fame that, we do it every other year at Nishoba. We have a committee that meets and we go through when we've got nominations that we look through. Like I said, this year, we've got, we try to get a student athlete, male or female, from each decade. Because we're, we're only, like I said, we're only in our fifth year, so we've got a long tradition and history of Nishoba athletics, so we're trying to play a little bit of catch-up. This is our second time inducting a team. We inducted the nineteen sixty-four football team two years ago. They went undefeated for the first time in school history. And this field hockey team is actually the first team that actually won a district title and went to the state finals. So, we're looking forward to it. We're doing it as a brunch this year, so we're doing it eleven A. M. on a Sunday, giving that a try to see. We're already up to a hundred and eighteen people attending.
So anyone can go to this?
Anyone can go, yep.
All right, super. That's awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Well, thanks.
All right.
Oh, I make a comment or two.
Yeah, I don't have questions, that's why I didn't say I have a question. I just have a comment or two. So, a couple of different seemingly random thoughts, but I just want to bring it forward. I think, first of all, Tanya, all the credit to you. You do a great job in the role that you are. I appreciate that you're my BFF every time I show up to one of these games. And if you're not there, then I know that you're off somewhere else to another sporting activity. And just the fact that you're so visible and you're always there, always working, I'm just so appreciative of that. You and I were talking last night in soccer field, actually, and I was telling you how, I mean, of course, as an educational leader, academics is always at the forefront of your thinking, always. But as I said to you, as a mom, you know, when I take a look at what athletics provided for my kids, and we were having that discussion last night on the field, and, you know, it, so two lines of thinking. First of all, when I take a look, I said to, to Tanya, my husband and I lived on a court or in an arena or you know, with the Babbington Court, the basketball, the volleyball, the indoor soccer, the outdoor soccer, that, oh my goodness. I mean, we were, we were just out straight all the time, and the track and field, you know, and but my kids learned about winning and losing. They learned about internal discipline and the strength that you have to gain from that. The fact that you could see the whole play with the field, that you could see the details. All those things that athletics brought to, to my kids, I'm so grateful, because I think it helped round them in ways that academics didn't. And I just, when we look at that whole child, you know, I think it's just so important. I love that we have great teams, and as I said to you the other day, one of the things that struck me the most, I mean, I, I did take in a portion of the volleyball team, the game the other day, and of course soccer game last night, and it's a sportsmanship. It's about, it's not just about learning to, to win or that competitiveness, but it's about that sportsmanship and how you deal, the respect that you bring to that game. So, so that's one piece. The other piece that I just really appreciated, and I said this to Tanya as well last night, when you watch those soccer players out there and glitter, like, oh my goodness, I've never seen so much glitter on a field ever as last night. And it was so cute, because you've got all the lights, all those incredibly strong lights coming down, and the glitter, like, oh my gosh, I'm sure that they saw us, I said this to you from Mars, they saw us last night. And including the coach glitter, coach was covered in glitter, you know. But what I love about it is for our girls to be out there, and you can be as girly as you want, but you can still be competitive, you can be tough, you can be thinking, you can be strategizing, you can be, I just, I just loved it. So, all, all kinds of kudos to you and your coaches, and I think we never want to lose sight of the fact that our kids work so hard at their sports, and our parents work so hard to make sure that the kids can be there, that they, that they're, they're fed well, that they've got the sleep, that they're working around their academics, and that all of this, it's just such a beautiful partnership, and I just think that Nishoba does it so well. So I just want to put that out there, so thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for adding.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, that was pretty good. Thank you so much, your having been given us the update, I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
It's okay with everyone here, I'm gonna jump over the school committee manual draft and hope that Kathy can make it. She had a unexpected issue come up, so we'll move that to the bottom of the agenda. All right, so the next up is the Subcommittee Recommended Reports for Governments. So, this, as we all know, was a way for us to understand what is some of the data that we're looking at from the administration that will help us do the jobs that we need to do, but to be respectful to the fact that the administration has a day job. So are there things that we think through the subcommittees need to be brought forward to the school committee, have a discussion about what some of those reports may be, in order to provide some direction, which will help us be a little bit more thoughtful about what we want, why we want it, how it's helping us get our jobs done, but then also give Superintendent Clinchy and her group an opportunity to start to build that into either what they're doing now, or if there's a new ask, we can have that discussion. So, does anyone have anything? I know from, because, Policy, you want to go ahead?
Well, we've decided that we would just ask us on an on, on an as-needed basis. We couldn't think of anything that we want regularly.
So, one of the things that came up at the roles and responsibilities and goal, not goal setting, roles and responsibilities meeting last night with Glenn Pootcher from M.A.S.C. was that when we're asking for reports, bring it to the school committee. So maybe if you could let everyone know, and that way we can understand the value of the report before it immediately goes to the administration. I think that would be helpful. Neil, do you want to share anything with finance or?
Well, I, I think for the next meeting, we have some, some stuff that we can definitely work on. I think there's, there's, we finally have identified a good starting point for some valuable reports. And again, we still have to wait for other things to figure out specifics.
Fall into place, yeah, I totally understand that. And I think from a personnel, subcommittee perspective, I know that through the conversations, and Lynn, you can jump into the conversations that we had, what we're really looking for is a list of the, the non-union salaried positions and the length of contracts and the salaries and any fringe, so that we can monitor that, which was what was put together last year. And Pat, we'll make sure if you don't have that, it's in, it's in one of the packets and we'll get it for you. If you're okay with that.
Yep.
And then, why don't we do this? Okay, because we've had this on the agenda a couple times, I think the point, everybody gets it, the point is to be thoughtful about our requests and bring them up through the school committee, so everybody feels like they have a handle on what we're all looking for and why we're looking for it. I think that will help us all be on the same page. So we don't need to put this on the agenda again, if we all can agree on the, the process. You have something.
Yes, you do, of course you do. Just a couple of quick thoughts on this. First of all, I would agree, I think that, actually, I think if you were sitting in all the subcommittees, you're starting to see some rhythms develop, to be honest with you. Like Personnel Subcommittee, to be honest, when, when we take a look at things, for example, we're, the next couple, next meeting for sure, when we take a look at some things, we already know in advance as administration that we need to bring certain things to them, because they're always looking to say, okay, what are other, not personnel, sorry, policy, what are other policies in other districts look like? So we already have other policies pulled for them. So you can start to see, like, I mean, that's not really a report, but it's about a process, and so we're starting to see that kind of thing, and what might other things be that we need? And in this case, for example, this one particular, particular policy, we know that we need to bring Donald Lindstrom to the table. So, you know, we're, we're, it's not even just reports, it's about reports of people whose area of expertise it is that we're bringing to that particular committee. When, when we look at personnel, for example, we already can see, because we, we've been through this now a couple of times, and you, you folks have come back and you've said to us, no, we want to see this and that as well. And so we table that again, but you, but we're starting to see as an administrative team, okay, we already know that they're gonna be looking for this community, that community, we know that you're gonna be looking for comps, we know. So we're, we're starting to be able to generate that now every time we go forward to you. So that's, that's starting to come into play. And I think for the fiscal component, you know, as I think, as Mr. Darcy said, I think we're gonna see, depending on what comes out of the forensic audit and best practices as we move those things forward, what does that look like? But I think that there are other areas, I mean, we know that you're gonna want to be taking a look at food services. We know that you're gonna want to be taking a look at electricity. We know that you're gonna want to be seeing revolving accounts. We know, so we know that these are the areas that we're gonna want to look at. And, you know, Pat and I had some really good discussion on this earlier today, and said, you know, what we want to start to be able to do is just chunk it out, right out of the system and hand it, we don't want to create a new report, we want you to see exactly what's in there. So, I, I see, and that's gonna differ probably for fiscal, depending on what, what areas they want to look at and do the deep dives in. So I think it's hard for fiscal particularly to come forward and say, well, we definitely need to see this on a regular rotational basis, because I think the asks are gonna be different all the time. So that's just my, my two cents for the fiscal, for the finance subcommittee. But any one of you, please correct me if I'm wrong, but for certainly Policy and Personnel, I think we're finding a rhythm there.
Yeah, I, I think we are too. With what, what, and we'll talk more about what happened in that meeting later on in the agenda. But that's goodness.
Can I have sort of a general comment that's not committee-related? There are a variety of reports that both go to the D.E.S.E. and also come back from them. And we don't have a history of being visible to the school committee. It'd be nice to both know what they are, and also to, so to get a sense of them and maybe figure out what are sensible to distribute to everybody. One example, just out of, you know, ten that I can think of, is the census, as a lot to over first, I think. Be nice to see that.
So what you really, yeah, what you're talking about is our SIMs, what we would, what we would call the SIMs report, the, the numbers that are going into the department, yeah.
And then another thing comes, you know, certified cash comes at some point, and we do an annual submission of finances. So a variety of things, it'd be nice to know what they are and
And that's absolutely right.
Have a conversation about, should they be visible to this whole school committee? And, you know, without even having to request it.
Pat's made some note, notes on those.
I wonder if it would be valuable for us to, you know, and I think some of us have talked about this, what the reports are and whether they are of interest, so.
The whole committee, the committee as a whole?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, like the, the SIMs that you're talking about, you know, SIMs or CIF, depending on whatever it is, that's probably of interest not just to the finance committee, that, that information might be of interest to the committee as a whole, to be honest with you. And it's one of those things, you know, when you're looking to the school committee and say, you know, what, what reports are we looking to generate, sometimes you don't know what you don't know. And this is a perfect example, yeah, I don't know if anyone has ever brought that forward to you to say, this is what, this is what CIF is, or this is what SIMs is. And you know, Pat, while we're thinking of this, we might want to have somebody like Kathy Leonardi come in and just even explain how that, you know, that whole process goes, or when we get something back from the D.E.S.E. that says we've got two thousand errors, and what that, what that really means. I mean, at first you say, oh my gosh, what does that look like? But the truth is, that's because that's how closely they're looking at every single thing. And two thousand errors is nothing when you, when you're submitting, you know, a couple thousand lines, do you know what I mean, so, for each of the schools. So, that might be a really good topic for us to bring forward to the school committee, you know, maybe in December or January, just so you see, this is the kind of information that we submit to the department. So, I know it's not a topic we've ever talked about, but I think it's a great topic.
No, but it would be helpful for us to understand once again, because Lynn was ahead of her head.
Well, I'm, I'm wondering if this is not dissimilar to, like, when we talk about tech or we talk about facilities, and we say, you know, what are our assets, what do we have? I mean, are we looking at this backwards by asking for reports? Because are we, are we asking for reports that are already out there?
Well, that's what we're talking about, is what is currently out there and what may be of value for us to understand.
So this CIF and the SIMs are all?
The same?
Facilities?
No, no, not at all.
Student population.
No, she'll, we'll, we'll get those, we'll get those on an agenda, and then you can do the report, you know, tell us what it is. Yeah, he's just talking about the general reports that we submit as a school district to, to DESI, and what, what do those look like? And that's a great question, and especially great, because in the last three to five years, it has changed so dramatically. So it's, it would be very timely to, to bring it to, to our committee as a whole.
And it would tell you what the state is actually looking for?
It would, it would give you an idea of the type, I think more than that, it just would give you an idea of what we have to capture to send to the state, right? Whether it's teacher evaluations, whether it's, all of that is all captured, and that's all part of SIMs.
Neil.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, just a comment, that I see our greatest challenge this year is, I mean, new administration, a lot knew about the district, right? So, we have to figure out what reports are really the reports that we want and that are valuable to us as a school committee versus information that you have. For instance, that's a great thing that Mark just brought up, but there's so many things that go on with DESI and so many reports that we'll never have any visibility to. So really, that is where we would look, I think, to you, to bring forward and say, these are some important things about the district that you need to know. And then there are other things, like, you know, our, our challenge on, on finance is where is the right perspective? You know, the fifty thousand foot level, the real narrow, you know, micro level, I mean, and, and so we want to get that balance that doesn't throw you guys over the edge, but still gives us the perspective. And so there's, there's a little bit of spinning of the waters, so to speak, as we sort of wrestle with some of these things. And I know that with the audit report and so forth coming out, that's gonna direct us, I think, a little more specifically to what we should be doing and what good practice is. So, it's, it seems like a little bit of a slow, frustrating start at the year for us, especially, I know, on the finance subcommittee. But I think we're gonna be really wishing for the good old days pretty soon, because I think we're gonna get pretty busy on some of these things.
I would agree. Yeah. We've got a lot going on this year, again. Okay, anything else? All right, thanks. The next item on the agenda is a discussion about additional meeting in November. Currently, we have one meeting in November, and this is it. What I would like to ask the committee is, to do is to add a meeting on November thirtieth. And let me tell you why. I did speak with John Sullivan from the Lansing Heath, he's the gentleman that's been working on our forensic audit. And he told me that he will be ready to report out to us on that night, on that day. I do not have a copy of the report, he's working on the draft right now. I do not have details to share with you, and I think it's probably best that those details come from him, so that he can share with all of us at the same time. What I'd like to do is dedicate that full meeting, probably two hours, to the report out, because John will be presenting to us, but I also want to build in time to allow us to ask questions of the report. I think, I think what I'm hoping is that we get it early enough to get it out, so that you have a day, at least two days maybe, to read it, to digest it. But I don't have a date on that yet, so all I'm asking is, more to come on this, and when it's available, just know it may come fast and furious, and please do everything that you can to read it, to get grounded in some of it. We're not gonna necessarily understand it, we're gonna have a lot of questions prior to that report out, because that's it, when John comes, I don't know that we want to, you know, delve back into the kitty to pull money out, to bring him back in to answer those questions. So this is gonna be our, our window, folks. And at this point, he has not come to me and said that we've exceeded the budget. In fact, that never came up. So that's the good news, we're definitely within the confines of what we allotted, so.
Is this the draft that he's giving us, or is this the final report?
This will be the final report. Yep. All right, so what I'd like is if someone would please make a motion to add a November thirtieth regular school committee meeting for the purpose of reporting out the forensic audit results.
Tell them.
Thank you, thank you Jennifer, first on Jennifer, second on Mark, all those in favor? It's unanimous, and thank you. Perfect.
Oh, you said it's dedicated, but I thought in personnel, we're gonna run something other one?
I mean, I'm, I want the whole meeting dedicated. If we've got one quick little thing of business, fine, I just don't want to load that time up, because I want to give John enough time to get through the full report. I don't even know how long it is, and give us enough time to ask, so I'm gonna try to stand the time.
I just wanted to be patient with myself by saying dedicated.
Oh, but we get to make the opport, I mean, if there's an opportunity to add it, we have to, we will. Okay, um, thank you, folks, really appreciate that, more to come. Subcommittee goals. We're gonna move into old business and then I'll jump back to the draft outline. So, the genesis of this was, as you know, we have a school committee annual goals that were voted on a month or so ago, and each subcommittee looked at those goals and looked at the priorities within those goals in order to achieve them, and then aligned themselves with the work that they're doing to feed up into those goals. And I'm really impressed with these subcommittee goals. Does, let's take them one at a time, we don't have to go through all of them, but alphabetically, finance, nice job. Thank you so much for aligning these with the dates in our goals.
I want to add that we need to vote on those still in the subcommittee on the dates, that those were put together in order to meet the meeting requirements, but we have not voted on those.
Okay, so this is your draft, which says, tonight's is a big fat draft across it. But they look great. I mean, everything that's on, I actually got kind of excited when I read this one, because everything that's on here is directly applicable to achieving one of the school committee goals. So thank you guys for, for the effort there. Does anybody who's not on the finance committee have any questions on these? Superintendent Clinchy, you have any questions? Okay, how about policy?
We also have not voted on the dates, so that won't need to happen.
Okay, so then we'll make sure that we add the votes for the subcommittee goals. But you're working on these, right? You, you're all working on them in the subcommittees, okay?
This is, yeah, this is, we voted on the goals, we have to vote on the dates.
Yeah, and the work, I mean, I can, just by reading them, I know some of the work that you guys are doing, and they're happening, so that's good news. Yeah, and the work, I mean, I can, just by reading them, I know some of the work that you guys are doing, and they're happening, so that's good news. Um, and then Susan, thank you so much, because I saw that the climate survey was on there, the MASC, policy servicing is on there, so thank you so much. Um, any questions for the policy subcommittee? Nope. And then Kathy's not here, but personnel, I think, um, the real key to this year is, um, now that we have Superintendent Clenchey, and she really understands the evaluation process, I'm really looking, and Lynn, you can jump in on this, really looking forward to that process being effective, efficient, and smooth, it'll probably take a lot less time. Uh, because last year was our first foray into it. So, um, anybody have questions on personnel, and these have been voted.
Can we make us smaller, a little more?
Can we, can we, Kathy's an overachiever, so.
There is a typo, I just wanna point that out.
Where is that?
On the third bullet down, at, after the word cost, it shouldn't be there.
Oh, that shouldn't be there, okay. All right, so we will, um, just be prepared for the next regular meeting, um, to have these folks have these voted in your subcommittees. And then we can tie this up and get them online, and.
So the next, so we're gonna vote with them at the thirtieth?
Um, I, does everybody have a subcommittee before the thirtieth?
We have an on the thirtieth.
You have an on the thirtieth, and you guys have one. Finance, you have one. I don't know, we'll, we'll see, we'll see. Okay. Hi Kathy, how are ya?
Wait.
Do you need a couple of minutes?
Nope.
On the, um, we're gonna jump back up to the school committee manual draft outline?
Hi.
Okay, well, clearly not, that's wild, but that's a first for, well, hello! Let me take this one for us. Um, in the packet, uh, there is a, a member, a member handbook, which actually, we're gonna call something else, we're gonna call it a manual. It is our school committee manual, um, and I think we talked about this, the purpose of the manual is, and this is part of our goals for the year, how do we, the school committee, the current sitting school committee, ensure that the work that we're doing and the information that we're gathering, and the knowledge that we're receiving, gets passed along from one committee to the next? Because I think for most of us, when we joined the school committee, you kinda had to pick it up on your own. So the first year, you're kinda not sure what you're doing, and then the second year, you start to get in the groove. But there's a lot of really bright people that have done a lot of really good work ahead of us, so we wanna capture that. So Kathy, um, took the initiative to build an outline for us, um, and I hope everybody's had a chance to look through it. We don't have to make decisions on this now, but this is Kathy's recommendation for the draft outline before they start being, um, uh, written. Has anybody, yes?
All right, I just need to get, can you do something else, cause I'd like to speak to that, or not, are you done with it?
I'm, we're all, okay. Okay, we're gonna move on, and you can jump in when you're ready.
Right, I just need to get my stuff up, sorry.
You can move, you can jump in when you're ready.
I'll give you the high sign.
Okay, so has everyone had a chance to look at the outline? Any questions or anything that looks like it's missing? Mark, I see a list.
We have a, we have a list of things that'd be nice to add to the outline, and maybe expand on. It'd be nice to mention our, um, friendly affiliates and the resources that they are, whether it's MASC, or perhaps the Aspect Collaborative, um, maybe the Regional School Association, um.
Oh, so maybe, um, that's.
So that's a resource that's useful to any committee member to know.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe also a link to the public records law, which is changing to us, and useful to the future school committee member. Um, and maybe, maybe mentions to, and links to our bylaws and guidelines, um, so that it's explicitly pointed to. I think those are the main thoughts I have, to just get those into the outline, so that we can expand on them as we go.
Can I just provide some context, if it's appropriate?
Sure.
Um, I did a, um, a search to see if we could, I could find, um, any other school districts that had handbook slash manuals. And, um, a lot of them said they did, but they were really policy manuals. And Framingham really had the only one that, and quite extensive, and of course Framingham is, um, a big town, and they have other things. Um, so the outline is derived from that, and, and there's a lot of text in there that we can probably adapt, um, because some things are just generic, but it's going to be important to, anything that's in there, if there is a reference to Mass General Law, or to our policies, to link those up. So then the other thing, and, um, um, last night, the work that we did with Glenn, he gave us two really terrific resources that are very concise, um, but I, I'm looking through those, those are some things that I would wanna add in terms of how it looks and the order. We're not there yet, but, um, I don't want the manual to be overwhelming or verbose, or contain a lot of vanity speech, which is something we learned about last night. Um, so, um, let me know what you want the next steps to be, Lorraine.
For, I think the next steps for this.
Yep.
I think, um, I think people need a chance to digest it.
Okay.
And then if you could send in your comments, if you have anything you wanna add, and then put a final, um, outline together.
Sure.
And then we can draft from there, cause what I'd hate to see happen is, we start drafting, and then things start to change, and that's gonna make you crazy.
But the other thing that might be, um, another way to approach it, would be to take it in chunks, so that people aren't getting the whole document.
Yep.
And maybe do a section at a time, submit it for, uh, feedback and input.
Yep.
And then move on down the way, and, um, so.
That sounds great.
Okay.
Jen, convert. Is the Framingham one online?
Yeah, I can send it to everybody, I have a PDF and a Word document.
Probably more than we need, but.
It's hard to get there online, but I, whatever security they have, I have successfully thwarted, and I will send it. There's just a lot of cute hoops, I don't wanna think that I'm acting, I'm not acting, but, um.
Thorting, that's a ten dollar word, nice job.
But I do, I thwart.
Superintendent Clenchey.
Thank you, and I, and I think that once you, once you get to a, a point where you feel solid with the outline, then I would suggest that you, you and I perhaps, or Kathy, you and I could sit down, and say, how can we now, how can we, being our office, help to support this, to make this a smooth process, to, to help build it, because I've got some different ideas that we can.
Oh, wonderful.
Great, that would be great.
And, and I think we can make it, we can do it in a streamlined fashion.
So we wanna give folks a timeline to give me feedback about the, um.
So I was just gonna say, let's talk about next steps.
Okay.
So the next steps are, everybody get Kathy, any additions, comments?
By the end of November, would that be okay?
End of November, I was gonna say by next week, but sure. Oh, yeah, that works, end of November, by the thirtieth.
Yeah, by the thirtieth.
Yeah, by the thirtieth, that works.
Okay.
Well, you wanted to report on it on the thirtieth, or no?
It's up to you guys, if you wanna give it to me.
No, because we're not gonna be doing that on the thirtieth, Lynn just checked me.
No, give me an opportunity to put stuff together and comment, and then, um, we can talk about that.
And then the following week, a later we have another meeting.
December seventh, so.
December seventh, Kathy, maybe if you, will that give you enough time?
That's plenty, thank you.
Okay, and you can do that, that's great, and thanks, Lorraine.
Just the outline, right?
Just the outline.
Just the outline, yeah.
Neil.
I, just out of curiosity, I mean, how, um, informative do you want this to be? Cause I mean, I'm seeing other things that could go in there potentially, uh, mentioning the fact that there is a tri-town, uh, in what that might mean.
Oh, that's a good one, a good one.
Also, that, you know, we work according to Robert's rules and so forth.
That's in there, I think, well, it's not, it's under, see, this, if, when you see the, the text.
Right.
Um, and actually, I had, um, sent, uh, Lorraine, an annotated version of the, I'll send, well, what I'd like to do, if it's okay with you, is send the Framingham document, and then the annotated version that I had sort of culled from the Framingham thing. Um, and basically, there were some things, I just did a, a replace, find and replace, Framingham with the Shoba Regional School District. Um, and, um, so you'll see Robert's rules are in there, so you could, maybe that would be helpful, so they're not reinventing the wheel, so I'll send both. So you have the outline, I'll send the Framingham doc, and I'll send the, the modification I did, yeah.
The only other one thing that just came to mind, um, was in the manual that Glenn gave us last night.
Yes.
Uh, there was an explanation of the subcommittees, uh, the chair, the role of the subcommittee, and so forth, and I think that would be really nice to.
I think that's in our bylaws.
It's in our bylaws, it's also in the Framingham document, and I think for, we need to look at the bylaws and, um, the things that Glenn gave us, and see what is, what fits for us. And, and also, now that we have the Framingham, um, book as a resource, we can sort of look and see what the similarities are, and see if there's anything we wanna tweak.
That sounds good, and I would just say, we really need to make the copy our own, so that we're not lifting someone else's work.
True, but there's no need to reinvent the wheel, if, uh.
Nope, but we don't wanna plagiarize.
No, we don't, we will, we will make the appropriate citations.
Perfect. That's good. All right, I think that's it, everybody knows what we were doing there, and the next item is, um, so lots of discussion about what are we doing with the, a high school, what are the thoughts on the high school? We had task force that was together for a year and a half, they provided a very comprehensive document on what the input was from the administration, from this task force group, um, from the school-based administration. And, um, last time we met, I asked Superintendent Clenchey to provide her perspective on it, so I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you. So I put a lot of thought into this in the last couple of weeks, since you, you asked me to go back and think on it a little bit differently. And I think originally, when I, my, uh, when I first went to the district, I said, you know, maybe we need to look at this building and say, what else can we do with it? And, and I'm still, still not sure that I wanna walk away from that notion. But since that time, I started thinking a little bit deeper on the notion of, do we present options to our communities when we, when we take a look at doing a feasibility study? Do we take a look at, do we just do a major remodel here, or do we just literally gut the building completely, just take it right down and build brand new? So I, I had a really good chat with the Mass, uh, the Mass School Building Authority, and I, I spoke with a woman who would literally walk us through every component of this, and as I, as I spoke with her, and I asked her, I said, well, if Neshoba was in line this year, what, what would we be as receiver? And right now, if this had been this year, which, this number changes every year, we would be a forty-eight point zero five percent receiver. That's substantially higher than I thought.
So what does that mean, cause I'm not sure people.
Thank you. So, so basically, uh, from the, the conversation I had with her that day, the range across the state goes from basically thirty-one percent to eighty. And what that means is like on every dollar, you would receive back that much money. So for every dollar spent, we would basically receive back forty-eight point zero five. Now, keep in mind, though, it's on what's agreed upon, it's not that you can just go out and spend whatever, or you say, well, gee, you know what, I think we wanna put on a couple of different science wings here. No, if you wanna do that kind of thing, then that's a hundred percent of your cost. So, so I wouldn't want you to think that it's just a blanket, whatever you, whatever you hold as, you wanna build, you get forty-eight point zero five percent back on that. It's about a process, and that number, though, changes from year to year. And it depends on the community that you're in, whether you're at the thirty-one or the eighty percent receiver, or in our case, this year, forty-eight point zero five. The other thing to keep in mind is that the, uh, Mass School Building Authority doesn't have to open up a window every year for applications. They will be, they're anticipating right now, though it's not in stone, but they are anticipating that there will be a window open for applications this year, for January two thousand and seventeen will be forward. So that's something that we're gonna wanna think about. Now, they have the two primary programs, like an accelerated repair program, and what they call the core program, I don't remember the acronym right now. But the, the core program would be where Minuteman, for example, lies, where they're just doing a complete rebuild. The accelerated repair program, I believe, Winchon and I believe that at that time, we were the first project on that. And that's where you're looking at roofing projects, or HVAC, or like the really big projects, all new windows, all, you know, whatever that looks like. Um, so I'm thinking, as I've been thinking more and more on this, that maybe, depending on what the feasibility study shows, we would fall probably more under that core than, than the accelerated repair. Um, I also had a great chat with the superintendent of Minuteman, and took a look at, uh, the work that led, we had a very long conversation about the process for them, the work that led up to being where they are. Um, the fact is, I mean, they're digging, I think they're, they're breaking, so I wanna say in April. And it's anticipated that in twenty-eight months from that April, they will be walking into their brand-new building. So that's the estimated time from beginning to end of that particular project. Uh, he was fabulous, and, you know, I really appreciate what he brought to the table, and brought to the conversation with me. And he just, he was very gracious, and said, whatever you need, we will help to support you, if this is a road that you wanna go down, we'll walk lockstep with you, so that you, you know, we can support, um, the process and help you, so that you're not reinventing the wheel. Uh, the, the individual I spoke with, that Mass School Building Authority, also said the same thing. This is not something to be afraid of, this is not something, like, we will walk you through every step of the process, if this is what you wanna do. So when I took a look back at all of this, I thought, I felt that I needed to communicate with these particular two bodies, basically the Mass School Building Authority and Minuteman, just because it's so close to us, and say, okay, where do we lie, and is this something that we really wanna take forward? Because I know that everyone around this table, and everyone in the viewing audience tonight, knows that we can't do anything unless our three communities feel that this is the road we want to go down. And so I think that there's a lot of preemptive work that's gonna have to be done, before we even say, okay, do we submit an SOY, do we, a statement of interest? Is that what we look at? Um, so, so when I took a look at what I feel sitting here tonight, which is, I've gotta say, substantially different than when you first brought it up in July and August. And now that I've had discussion with this, now I know that, you know, that forty-eight point zero five percent, it may only be forty-five or forty-two when we get there, but it's not at the lowest end, it's not the thirty-one percent. And to me, that was a little bit of a game changer, to be honest with you. Um, so I, I sit here tonight, and I say, you know what, I'm very supportive of the concept of, of moving forward with some type of a feasibility study. That also is different if we move along in the core program versus if we move along with the accelerated repair program. And so if that's a road you wanna go down, or you think that this is a road that you wanna go down, I would connect with, um, you know, I know, Mark, you've done a lot of work in this area. I would be connecting with Mass School Building Authority, because that, that particular component, the feasibility study, is different if we go down the core avenue rather than the accelerated. Um, I would also say that, as I sit here tonight, I'm very supportive and feel confident in moving forward with either, um, a large remodel or a rebuild, if that's the route that you wanna take. Um, and, and I think finally, I wanna say that I'm really supportive and respectful of the work that the task force did, because I think we really wanna listen to that and take, uh, take a look at it, you know. As we're sitting there looking, for example, Jeff Converse and I are, are director of facilities, and we're saying, do we wanna replace floors? You know, like every time I walk over there, I, you know, I, for example, they just did some repairs on, uh, one of the floors outside of the auditorium, and yet I know that there's a door over there where there's like a huge chunk missing, like, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. Do we, do we do just a remodel and, and just patch all of this stuff? I know we've got major issues with, with the roofing system right now in terms of, um, leaks in that roof, particularly in the auditorium. You know, how much money is good money after bad? Like, when, when do you say, wait a minute, I think we wanna stop here and think about this? Or do you want us to continue project by project? I think that that's a decision that you need to make. Um, I also spoke, uh, I have had some conversation, though somewhat limited, but nonetheless, conversation with each of our town managers, and I mean each of them. Um, Ryan and, uh, Ryan McNutt and Don Lo, and I had some discussion on this, uh, one Monday morning. And this past Monday morning, uh, Bill Wrigley was there, and Ryan McNutt, and we had a conversation. So I can tell you that I've brought this up just to say, you know what, my thinking, this is where my thinking is leaning right now. So, uh, this is not a surprise, and we had good conversation in both of those meetings around all of this. So, I mean, it was, it was even simple logistics, like, well, where would we house the kids if we were gonna build new? If we were gonna build new, where would we house the kids, what could that look like? Um, is that, is that how we want to go? How, how do we prep our towns for this? How do we, I mean, we, so we had really good discussion, uh, with, with the town administrators and myself. Um, I think the other thing we wanted to look at too is the fact that it used to be that you queued up, you got in line, and you kind of went in there and, you know, you might wait four or five, six years. That queuing up process doesn't exist anymore. So my understanding in talking with Mass School Building Authority is that every year, basically, you would resubmit that SOI. And it depends on the pool, the application pool around you, depends what the need is, it depends on a myriad of, of mitigating factors that you would be considered, and then all of a sudden, when they say go, that's when, that's when you really, you know, and, and the other thing that you're gonna want to consider is this, this will become all-consuming for your superintendent. So you want to kind of keep that in the back of your mind too, you know? Um, and, and I reminisce, you know, to the last meeting, I think, Jennifer, where you brought that very kind of thing up. And, and it's sage advice, and I think that that's something that we want to kind of think of as well. But having said all of that, um, I really feel strongly to say that I support moving forward with either the core or the accelerated repair or the model, remodel, if that's what you want to do. With whatever project this school committee deems as the route that we want to take and our communities in a partnership. I'm not afraid of this, I'm, I'm not intimidated by this, I'm very comfortable with doing this. When you feel the time is right and if you feel that we're ready to go there. So you'd asked for my opinion, and I, I lay that out.
Really appreciate you giving us that, because I know this is a topic that we've been kind of skirting around and talking about, but running back and forth. And I want to reiterate what Superintendent just said. If we start looking at this, if we start getting, there are steps that need to be taken, and there are several steps that need to be taken in order to decide if we're ready, where commitment has to be made. So I think what I'd like to do is, and I've asked Mark if he would take point on this, and come back to us with a list of what would need to happen. We are not committing to a build, we're not committing to a remodel, we're not committing to a thing right now, but what we are committing to is, it's time for us to move the discussion forward, do the difficult thing about looking, what is it that our options are? And at what point do we start these steps? When do we bring the communities in? Because the discussion and the decision is not a school committee decision. The decision is truly, as the superintendent said, the community's decision as to whether or not they want to make that financial investment into the schools. We'll do the groundwork, we'll do the legwork, we're gonna have opinions, we're gonna have a recommendation. But we would still, if we decided to move into the program, in order to do that, it's a requirement that the towns actually have a vote. So Mark, if you would, for the next regular meeting, which is not the thirtieth, it would be the December seventh, if you would come to us with a list of, here are the steps based on the programs, and just give us an overview, and I think that would be helpful for the rest of the community to hear and to see as well.
So both for decision or statement of interest as well as what happens after?
Yeah, I think soup to nuts, so if we decided we wanted to look into this program, what would the steps be and at what point does a decision need to be made? So that we can, if we decide to move forward, I'm not saying we're moving forward with a build or a reno, I'm just saying that we're moving forward with starting the process of looking at what the options are, um, that we would be able to take everyone along with us until the point where we really needed to fisher cut bait. Does that make sense? Neil?
Uh, just a quick question on this, so, um, part of it is getting community involvement, obviously, and
Right.
So I'm just wondering, like, when Mark comes back with that information, it's gonna be valuable. Is there a way of taking that and boiling it all down to like an FAQ and then just, just a quick, one-page, like, highlight thing, so somebody can take a high-level look at this, a parent at home, whatever, maybe you attach it as a, as a page on the website or whatnot, that they can go park, look at, and, and start forming some opinions or questions? Cause I think if we just like spit this out during a meeting, and reports this or whatever, um, it's, it's gonna miss a lot of people, and and it's so complicated, that I think we can get into the weeds really, really quickly and gloss people's eyes, eyes over if we're not careful.
I think that's a great suggestion, um, and I think, you're right, one page of, we're starting the process of looking at this, we're not committing to this,
Right.
but here are the steps. And so we're gonna start with, you know, the, the recommendation on the SOI, which does not commit us to money, but it does start the process of bringing people in to look at it. The good news is, so great suggestion, yes, you might even work on that. Look at him, no. That's Mark. I might work on that with Mark. Uh, but we've got Jennifer here and Lynn, and they've both been through very large-scale building projects, so yay, go us. And of course you have, cause you're gonna be busy. Uh, but that doesn't mean we're, I just, I can't say it enough, we're just starting the process of looking at it. I don't want people to get concerned or excited one way or the other, okay? Neil?
My only other question is, the NEASC report that came out, um, it did mention issues at the high school in there. Will that help set us on where we're going to fall on the, when they make that decision?
It's very, it's very helpful.
Okay.
I spoke with someone at the MASC conference, annual conference last week, I stopped, talked with a few people, and just to find out what, you know, what the process is and high-level stuff, and I asked about the NEASC report, and they said, you really need to let them know that, that NEASC had some comments. So, okay.
And, and they being MSBA?
Pardon?
Yes.
What was that?
Have they been MSBA?
MSBA.
Yes. Yes.
And I also attended a MSBA, um, um, seminar.
Session.
A con- session of conference, and one of the useful bits of information is that it does, their going forward or recommending go forward is, depends on what other districts come forward and how desperate their needs are.
Right.
So, I think as much as perhaps half of the districts that submitted an SOI were either did not go forward on their own or was not invited, so it could well be, depending on what's going on in the rest of the state that year, will affect.
And that's a great point, because even if our communities go, yeah, we really want to do this, whatever this is, we might not have the opportunity to do this,
That's right.
because there may not be an open spot.
Right, and they mentioned six tiers of evaluation, and apparently, fi- tiers five, four, three, four and five, or four, five and six, typically are not important enough to make it into the queue. So there's a, you know, people were asking from their districts, we have this problem or that problem, what do you think? Well, that one might not make it in, but this problem over there is severe enough so that probably would be ahead of others.
I, I'm curious to know, Mark, were there many people in that session?
It was a full house.
Yeah, because that, that was the other thing that I know, I noticed, it's funny you should say that, and you and I haven't talked about this, I didn't know that you'd attended that session, but one of the things I picked up at, at our, our conference were, were the number of conversations I found myself involved in where people were saying, we're looking to build a new middle school, we're looking to build a new high school, and, and so that's why I wondered, I get, to the point, we may not get this for two or three years, even once we decide that this might be a route for us to take, so. Uh, I, I think there's a lot of activity right now.
Apparently common in many districts is that a lot of buildings were built in the fifties and sixties with the baby boom, and they're now fifty and sixty years old, and they're all aging into time to renew or rebuild now.
And there were a bunch of regional school buildings built at all about the same time during the regionalization period, so those are all coming offline all, kind of all at the same time as well. So there's a lot of pressure on MSBA, I will give you just a little bit of information, having dealt with the Minuteman project nine years ago, Minuteman started that project.
Oh wow.
Um, and that was not MSBA's fault, that was Minuteman, that was the district not moving forward when it should have. Um, Minuteman was at forty-five. Now they'd be eligible for thirty-one, just because who's in the, who's in that district? So.
Wow.
That gives you an idea, now, at forty-five is the eligible reimbursement. For the building project, it comes down to about thirty-two. So you have to realize that it looks nice to say, you know, forty-eight point oh five, but a lot of stuff that you need isn't, isn't eligible by MSBA stamp.
That's exactly right.
So you can't not have them, but you end up having.
But Minuteman too has got some really unique programs, right?
Well, it's a vocational school, they took that into account.
Mm-hmm.
Um, mm, yeah, so there's class size issues that we wouldn't face at the high school because, you know, physical classroom sizes.
Mm-hmm.
Minuteman needed to tweak some of that because you can't have a, so, you know, room this size to hold a carpentry shop. Um, but, you know, I'm just saying, there's a lot of things that you think should be covered, cause you need them for a building, that is not, just from the way MSBA functions.
And that's clear on the front end, alright, right, that's not.
Yeah, and we're getting way ahead of ourselves now. But, um, I think that, I think the point is well-taken in that it's a really complex experience, and.
Now, but MSBA will say also that they are really, I mean, they do this, this is what they do, and they do walk you through it. And they, they're not gonna let you out there and just hanging in the wind saying, you know, they will take you through each step, um, you know, minutia by minutia, and you've got to do it right too. I mean, they'll call you on it if you're not doing it right, so it's not, as it, once you get started, it's not as intimidating as getting started is.
Right.
Yeah, making the decision too.
Right.
Okay, Lynn, I know you have something to add.
No, I mean, we're, we haven't really gone anywhere yet, I mean, once we see what Mark's doing and we send it out, good. Just here in mind, we're still paying for the last one. I don't know how many more years we have, but.
The renovation or the addition on the high school?
Bond, yeah.
What is the, do you know when the bond retires?
I think five years.
Okay.
I think so. We did go out when we financed it, though I'd have to double check.
Yeah, I remember that experience too, okay. All right, um, let's move on, again, no commitments, it's a discussion. Okay, um, subcommittee reports, finance.
Um, we don't have one because of the mass conference.
Okay. So you'll have one next time?
Yes.
Personnel, Kathy wasn't there.
Right, but you approved the goals. No, I was in the phone for the second meeting.
Okay.
But I think one of the agenda items was to approve the goals, were they approved?
They were approved.
Okay.
Has amended.
Has amended, okay, and then, um, there was other agenda items.
There was discussion about, and I think this'll probably come up.
I think that, that's why we had talked about maybe the thirtieth, and I was, I appreciate the Kath, or Lynn, that you brought that up again, the thirtieth, that we would bring those names, those positions forward.
To the thirtieth Personnel Subcommittee meeting.
Yes.
Yes, so there's some, um, positions that the superintendent is recommending, and more to come on that when we have the details. Okay. Um, policy.
We have not that.
You have not. Okay.
So i- is there a Personnel Subcommittee meeting on the thirtieth right before, will that conflict with?
No.
You were thinking of bringing it to the school committee on the thirtieth, that's what you had discussed.
We have another, I, you know, I'm gonna have, we're gonna have to check, Alita's gonna have to check with, uh, to make sure that we don't have conflicts there.
Okay. I didn't know there was a Personnel, does that Personnel doesn't meet on Mondays?
They usually meet on Mondays.
I think there was one scheduled for the twenty-first, we were going to evaluate whether or not we needed to meet as much because of some other work.
Right.
But we did have one on the books for the twenty-first, I'm pretty sure.
Alright, so we need to clarify all that, because I know that Superintendent Clenchey's got some things she really needs to share on the board. For Personnel. Yeah.
But after that, you're right, I, I think that.
Yeah, we're gonna cut back a little. I mean, because we've got so much going on.
Yeah, the twenty-first, um, PSC five-three, um, yeah.
Okay, well that gives us a couple of weeks.
Right. Right before the holiday.
Okay, um, Nicole is not here, so.
Policy, did you, is policy reporting out on the thirtieth?
No.
You have to wait until the thirtieth.
No, we're going to have a Subcommittee meeting prior to our school committee meeting.
Yeah. Okay, and then CPAC, were you at the CPAC meeting?
No, I wasn't.
Okay, so Nicole's not here, so we do not have a report. Tech Committee, Neil, do you have anything?
Uh, Tech Committee was actually, that, that was almost my third strike tonight, so we got canceled today this afternoon, so, yeah.
Yeah, we got canceled.
Good, okay, so there you go. Um, Emergency Response Committee, Jen?
We meet Monday.
NIFR, okay.
Did you, Superintendent, do you have anything that you want to bring forward before? No, I think that we're, I, I think what, what I thought we would do is wait until that particular meeting, um, although, um, Donna Lindstrom did come in and apprised the chair of the recommendations, and we did have some of that discussion, so I think we're waiting for that next meeting, and then you could probably come out and report out with that. With Donna Lindstrom, I think is on, on top for that December meeting.
December seventh?
Yeah.
Will do.
Perfect, excellent, I'm gonna make it note of that.
And I believe that, that what we had hoped, uh, because our chiefs were all involved, uh, on, on that, um, that committee as well, that we would invite them to come and join us as well that, that evening.
I got a heads up.
Okay, yeah, that would be great, I'm looking forward to that. Okay, I'm hoping you have something positive on audit advisory.
People are working on getting a meeting date after we've had canceled two in a row.
So let's talk about audit advisory. Um, the whole push for this is because last year, our contract had ended with our current annual auditor, which is separate from the forensic audit that's currently wrapping up. And, excuse me, um, we did not have time to scramble to find a, a new auditor, so we just extended the firm that we were using, that had, we'd been using for ten years, to do it this past year. The only thing I would, um, like to encourage is that we need to have a definitive, this group needs to get together and start the process well before the end of the year, so I'm, I'm.
So I would speculatively say, not speaking for the committee, but as an in- interested individual,
Yeah.
it would be my desire that we get an RFP in good order by the end of December, so that school committee and the administration has something to, you know, modify if they wish, and then get it out in January, and we have some response in February, and maybe have committed to somebody. In case it fails, we still have enough time to do it again.
Well.
That, that would be my speculative.
When do they, when do they, when do they, when do they need to be notified in order to get us in their books?
Um, basically a month ahead.
Yeah.
I mean, it's desirable to have a good relationship.
They need to be told in February? Did you hear that, Pat just said February?
It's a good idea.
Cause they work us in for the spring, usually.
For the spring. It's a good idea for the administration to be ready with all things that they, the auditor wants, so that, that we're saving our mon- our money by doing the work that the auditor might do if we don't do it, so.
What?
It's good for us to know who our auditor is, so that we're doing the work that they want.
So it's kind of unacceptable not to have an auditor. Um, and I'm also concerned that this, this group hasn't met, um, because they have to select a chair, right?
We've not had a organizational meeting yet.
So, do you want me to jump in on this? Is it, would it be helpful?
Um, I think the chair, she's asked for dates for everybody, after we canceled our last meeting, and I, at this moment, she's ready, I mean, compiling or poking people for their availabilities.
But she's really not the chair.
She, right, she's the acting chair.
She's the acting chair until they can reorganize.
So why don't we do this, we have, um, December ninth, we need a date. We need, we need to know when, I'm assuming that's a month, right? Even though we get the holiday in there.
I suspect we can, we're gonna try to be at least twice in December.
This, I, I don't think that this should be lengthy, I mean, I think it's just a case of getting together,
Right.
deciding it, and then going out, and then if you need help pulling the RFP together, whatever, we can, we can help you to do. I think it's just a case of getting, getting a date, and I'm sure that you could probably do something before our December seventh meeting, so.
Um, that would be great, so on December seventh or ninth, we'd have the report out. But if Pat, um, if Pat's timeline is right, just, can you got, work with Pat to make sure that?
I, I'm telling you what, um, what it was like with powers and solid yet, in the spring, anywhere from the end of April, you know, beginning of May, that's when the committee do the approval.
But, but you mentioned that they gotta get us in their queue.
Right, and that's why I'm saying that they probably need to know the end of January.
Okay. So we'll put you on for the December ninth, I believe, that group will be able to gather the, all right? Okay, thanks. Um, okay, I think the next up is the superintendent's report.
I always, I always like it when it's my turn. So a couple of quick things, I, I mentioned just about the, the teams tonight, and I, I just want to reiterate, I, I, if you're reading my report on, online there, just a special thanks to our coaches, to our. reading my report on, online there, just a special thanks to our coaches, to our students, and to our parents uh, for such a great fall season. You know, I, it, it's interesting, um, I was sitting here thinking, as I was listening to Tanya go through, how many districts would just love to be in the position that we're in, where you hear the, the wins and the losses, and the, and the number of, of, of teams that are going to districts, or won districts, or that, that, you know, are going to that next level. It's just amazing, and I think that it just shows the commitment, uh, that, that everybody as a community puts forward to these, to these, um, athletes. It's just amazing. And I just so enjoy going out and watching. I wish I could take in more games and I, I can fit into my schedule, but I love and respect the solid gamesmanship and sportsmanship that I see encouraged and just innately come from our students. It's just really, really special to watch. Um, the NESC, uh, MESS Conference that I know quite a few of, uh, uh, took in. And I just wanna say a special thank you to those of you who are able to attend, because it's a time commitment. I mean, you literally are leaving your families and everything else to go down to the Cape for a couple of days, and it's not like-
In November.
And it's not like you go down and you just take in this, or you take in that. I mean, it's a commitment, you get in there at like 8 o'clock in the morning, or 8:30, and you don't leave until 9 o'clock at night. I mean, you're there for, you're sit- you're tied to your superintendent, like, seriously, at the hip, for hours, all day.
He should be a couple of times. He found us again.
Nice work.
He tried to lose me, but I found you every time.
You were very good about it, yes.
And then you have, you know, you, you, all day with me, and then straight through for dinner, too, because you haven't had enough of me all day long. You're with me for dinner. And, and the Commissioner's address, and, and wasn't that nice, the Commissioner came over to say hello? I thought that was very nice.
He came over to say hello, but you introduced him to us.
I felt it was appropriate. I felt it was appropriate, anyway, it was very, very nice. I thought it was a great conference. Overall, it was a great conference, and I think there were great sessions. Uh, our, our Chairman actually presented at one of them, you did a great job, I was, I was in that one as well, and um, you, you, um, did a session with another Superintendent and, uh, our, our MSC, um, Field Rep. And I thought you just did a great job at talking about district governance and such, so it was, it was, I was just really proud. I was proud to be there with you as the Chair of Presenting and doing such a good job. But I was proud to be part of Nishoba and be surrounded, because a lot of times, as you know, you, a lot of superintendents go there, and there's, they have no School Committee members with them. So it's, it was really special to go and have School Committee members there, so I'm just really appreciative of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, one of the other things that I took in, uh, in the last few weeks was the Worcester Superintendent's Roundtable. And that, for me, was a return visit to the, the Worcester County Superintendent's Roundtable. For me, it was like going home. It was really, really, really special. I mean, of course, a lot of new faces, but a lot of faces that I haven't seen in a couple of years, and that was just, it was wonderful. The session that we had this time was a focus on school safety. And I, I'm anxious to bring up some of the things that, that were brought up there with our, uh, uh, next emergency task, uh, force group. Um, anyway, it was very cool, very, very interesting. Um, I talked already about the meeting at Minuteman, but that was time very well spent, and of course, I love to stop at the bakery always, on my way out the door. Tell me that that is so specific, right, that you're, you've never been, oh, yeah, you walk out, and you, of course, pass the incredible, incredible variety of every type of pastry and cheese. I walked out, I had two huge bags. It literally filled my fridge with all, every pa- in fact, the poor, I said, I will take one of everything that's in this counter, and that's what I just bought, one of everything.
And you shared them with us. Thank you so much.
So my husband is now successfully gained 20 pounds as a result of my stop at Minuteman. But anyway, it was fabulous, and I, and I so enjoyed, uh, I, I, meeting up again with Steve Sherek, who I knew when he was Superintendent of Schools, of course, in, in, um, at Monty Tech. And so now he works with Minuteman there in the office, as you well know, Jennifer. So it was nice to spend some time with him and, and with Ed, it was just time very, very well spent. Um, and, and of course, we had the MESS workshop last night, uh, that a couple of you have alluded to, and I would agree, Kathy, you said this last night, and you said it again tonight. Um, I think the, the documentation that he provided was, I, I think, wonderful. And it's always nice to hear his stories from around the state.
Yep.
And it gives you some perspective of how we kind of fit in with that as Nishoba, and, and I just thought that that was time very, very well spent.
Feel good about it, doesn't it?
Well, that too. Actually, it really does.
Us, like, we're doing all right.
We're doing, we're doing better than all right.
Yeah.
We're doing great, so. And then one of the things that I, I thank Alita for including some pictures here, uh, was the, uh, the Grade 3 Pumpkin Storybook presentation, how fun was, was that? And Alita's really, she's really good about saying, wait, you need to run down and see this, this is happening here, this is happening there. She kinda keeps me on, those little special things that are just the stuff that I love to do, that sometimes I get so caught up in the minutia and I, you know, of our day-to-day work. And she's great at always saying, don't forget about this, or don't forget that. And that particular day was just so fun, oh my goodness. And talking to all the children that were in there was jam-packed with adults and children, and it was just, it was great. So that's a bit of a snapshot of the, the last two weeks for me.
Wonderful.
And if you have any questions, anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Yes.
And I'm not sure, I think this is the appropriate time for this. Um, so last night, we had that vote in Massachusetts where they've now legalized marijuana. Um, and this, um, I'm hearing all over the internet is a nightmare for schools. Uh, have you heard anything about any, I imagine we're gonna have to revise a bunch of our policies and so forth to deal with A students that might be 21 years old, um, and, you know, kids. Tanya was saying MIAA is gonna be looking at things, I just didn't know if you had any perspective of this.
No, you know, I, actually, it's, uh, uh, thank you, I mean, um, that was certainly of interest to me, as well as the charter school question was of interest to me, too, right? And watching that, and, um, so, for example, the Commissioner sent a note out today with regards to charter school, you know, and, and that component. But nothing has come out with regards to the legalization component. So to be honest with you, it's a great question, and I think that they're probably trying to figure out, now what?
But it becomes legal, if I'm not mistaken, December 15th.
It is. It is December 15th, absolutely right. So I think that there's messages that need to come from there, there are messages that need to come from our Police Department. I think that, I think there's a variety of like a, a think tank there that needs to get messages out to how they expect us to deal with it.
Is that something that the Emergency Response Team would work on, or is that something that would, they would work directly with you on?
I think it would be more, to be honest with you, probably more like policy.
Policy.
To be honest with you, I think that that's probably where it's gonna land.
Okay.
My assumption is that, that you can't smoke within a certain distance of a school, and that's gonna cover-
Right.
Doesn't matter where you're smoking.
So you have all your teachers are over 21, so-
Right, but that's, that's your assumption on the thing, and that, there's, there's no clarity in what's going on with it.
Says smoking. The sign doesn't say smoking cigarettes.
Actually, I think that was, but I'm glad you brought that up.
Right, so we have a smoking policy that we just got put in place for cigarettes and for elec- we changed it.
Oh, you specified.
We modified it to include electronic cigarettes, um, because we had to. And now, obviously, since this is legal, this might fall under smoking again, you know what I mean? For-
You wish to say, cause smoking.
I, I was, just to be clear, too, and I, I wanna remind everybody that when MESS sends something out, that's probably another place that we'll be looking for, for guidance. Their stuff has already run, been run past lawyers, right? Before it even lands on our desk. So that's something that, whatever we do with this, we're gonna wanna make sure that our, our lawyers and the MESS's lawyers have looked at it and vetted it before it comes to us.
Susan, did you-
Great question, great, great question.
No, I was just saying, it's, it's, there's other ways of considering it, it's not just-
Right, well, rocky.
That's exactly right, and then you got, and I, and, you know, ultimately, but, I mean, we have nothing in the faculty regulations that deals with this now, which we need to modify. We need to modify parents on campus, I mean, we, we have to hit this whole thing, which is, it's a bit of a nightmare for us. And it is, as I see this, and logistically so.
Actually, I think what Neil is saying is really-
Oh, he, he's, no, he's absolutely right.
So here you go.
Yeah.
That's yours. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, you're absolutely right.
So that was one of the questions on the ballot, and the other question was the charter school question.
That failed.
And that did not pass.
Right.
Um, and we, as a school committee, did not take that on. Um, and I know that some districts across the state did, we did not. Um, so, it doesn't mean that charter schools goes away, it just means that the number of charter schools that are in the state remain.
Right.
And the, the rate at which they can grow, right?
Right.
At the state, yes.
Field regulations.
Is the same.
Yeah, just related to some of the things in the School Committee's taking positions, one of the sessions I went to was the delegate, um, get-together. And, uh, many school committees have subcommittees, the leg- they're called legislative, legislative action committees. And as, there is a, a process by which different school committees can submit issues to MESS uh, to be considered as action items, and those are, you know, sent out to the delegates. And then they, they vote on them, they choose four and they vote on them. And I know that we always have a lot on our plates, but if not this year, we should at least investigate it, look at it,
Yeah.
and see if it's something we wanna do, because, um, I was very impressed with the, the discourse, um, around the issues and the, the discourse around, um, charter schools. And one of the things that came up was the, the hype about these charter schools, and kids from framing school, failing schools will finally have a chance to excel. And somebody said, so what about the kids at the failing schools?
Right.
This is so great, make them all charter schools. So I think people got that piece of it, but the idea that, that the, uh, delegates from different school committees got up and discussed it, I think, I was very impressed, it was a good session to, to-
So that was something that the Superintendent and I talked about, was exactly what you just raised. And actually Dorothy Presser, a week before
Uh-huh.
the conference said, you should be one of the delegates. I'm like, okay, well, we should do that next year.
Yeah.
Because with one week to go, we didn't have the time.
That's right.
And it's not one of those things that you just jump in and jump out of.
Exactly.
You're in. I think that the timing on that is excellent for next year.
Yep.
Um, especially given some of the big initiatives that were, and we are, and you know what, folks? I know, everybody feels like we, I've been working so hard for so long, but, um, we're getting, we're getting there. We're making progress to kinda get that foundation really strong, and I think that's a great one. Cause we need to have a presence for our three communities at that conference.
Right. And then if we choose to take the stand or whatever, I, you know, I'm on the fence about how political that we wanna be, but I do believe we advocate for what's in the best interest. Definitely for our kids, but to, to allow children to stay in schools that people call failing schools is an abomination. And even though it's not us, what role do we play as part of the larger school community, School Committee, community? Um, so, and I'm sure there'll be other issues that arise.
So I, especially around the charter schools, I did speak with a couple of different Chairs in different districts, and I did speak with, um, Dorothy and Glenn even about that topic.
Yes.
And they both, and I, I said, you know, should we have an opinion on this? And they both said, not now, you can't do this now. And I said, okay. Because it really wasn't fair to have a quick 10-minute discussion, or two 10-minute discussions, because it's such a complex subject, we really need to do it, we need to do it justice. But anyway, that's a really great point, I've got it down for next year, and thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so does anyone have any correspondence they would like to share with the group? And if so, I would assume it's in the packet, but if not, we'll move on and assume that the meeting minutes for, Lynn?
So, when you say that, I mean, do we talk about the calendar?
Do we talk about the calendar?
That was in the, um, correspondence.
Where is it?
It says, uh, Bill Rostow resident, question clarity.
Oh.
Is this in your calendar?
Hold on a second. It's my fault.
That was the one email that the whole school committee got, that he just wanted me to change the colors.
I think that was the change that we fixed.
Oh, so that's actually a kind of a success story, so this gentleman-
Oh, that's right, yeah.
So this gentleman sent an email, thank you, Lena.
Thank you.
Lynn. Um, sent an email from Stowe, he was having some trouble understanding when the days were off, and this week is so messed up with, you know, um, parent teacher conference last Friday and Monday, and, um, and then we've got Veterans Day and Election Day, and it was just all over the place. And the gentleman said, I don't even really know what, when school's open, when it's not open, and the calendar wasn't clear. So I got back to him and said we would do something and I would let Alita know. Meanwhile, unbeknownst to me, Alita goes in and changes it, revises it, it is so easy and clear, and I thought, I didn't even ask her to do it, I just said we would talk about it. So thank you, Alita, for jumping in and doing that, it looks awesome. Neil?
Calendar related, um, do we have the Wednesday for Thanksgiving off, as far as the kids in the district?
We do not.
Or is it a half day?
It's a half day.
It's a half day, okay.
I think last year, the, there was a lot of decision, discussion about that, and the, um, Calendar Committee recommended the half day, the day before Thanksgiving.
Right.
And then a full day
Okay.
right before Christmas, but-
Thank you.
I hope-
Is lunch served?
This year with the Calendar-
Is lunch served?
It's the early-
So it's the early release for half day?
What, what?
No lunch.
There's different half days.
Um, I hope this year with the Calendar Committee that we're able to get that a little sooner. Um, and so we can have more discussion, cause there's a, there's a lot of parents who-
I actually had some discussion on this very topic, I mean, I know that's not an item for tonight, but-
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I did have some, uh, some really good discussion the other day with Anne Marie Stoyka, because I guess that generated out of, uh, Human Resources last year.
Yeah.
And so Anne Marie and I have already had some discussion, we've already talked about some of the concerns that I know some of you have brought forward, and some of the concerns of yours have brought forward.
Oh, excellent.
So, just so that you know, we've already started that discussion.
Oh, that's great, perfect.
Not four weeks?
What?
More full weeks is more-
Yeah, yeah, that's one of the big concerns.
Actually, that was, that is one of the topics, that, you're absolutely right.
And I think even the teachers have made comment about that.
Not a lot, but, oh, one or two.
Okay. Um, consent agenda. Anybody have any issues, any changes? Otherwise, let's assume that the meeting minutes of October 26th and the warrants for November 11th are, um, okay, moving on. Um, items for next agenda, Alita, do you have anything more? Uh, oh, well, the next agenda is November 30th, so-
Which is just the forensic.
We're gonna try to preserve that date, and then the December 9th, Kathy will, everyone will send Kathy their comments by November 30th on the outline for the handbook, the manual. And Kathy will give us a recommended final out, first outline. Kathy will also send everyone, um, the initial-
I did, I just sent it.
Oh, excellent. Thank you for doing that.
Yes.
That's the 7th. And then, um, Mark, you are going to share with us on the 7th, or, is it the 7th, or this is 7th? Why do we keep messing those dates up? Um, the steps on the MSBA process, and you're gonna give us an update on the date for the Audit Advisory Meeting. And hopefully, if you've had a meeting by then, you guys will be able to determine when you're gonna get that RFP out. And then we'll also have the report out with the Safety Committee, Jennifer will speak to that, and Donna Lindstrom will be here as a resource.
Also, one of the topics that Donna Lindstrom is gonna wanna talk about, too, is, uh, potential changes to the health curriculum at the grade 8 level. And so we wanna make sure, I think we already have that on the agenda, but we wanna make sure that that's on as well. And then this, the Personnel Subcommittee will probably report out that night with regards to some potential changes, or potential additions.
Yeah. Susan? Yeah, Susan?
Did, did you wanna, there, I noticed, I wasn't here last time, but I noticed in the minutes that there was a discussion about the class size policy.
Yes, we need to bring that back around, so.
Would that be on the 7th?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we also need to vote on the subcommittee goals, Alita. But I'm glad you brought that up, yes.
So, so 30th or the 9th that you're talking about?
7th.
7th, December 7th.
7th, right.
The 30th, I'm trying to preserve for.
Right.
The report out, 'cause I think, I've, I've not looked at one of his reports, so I don't know what to expect and I want all of us to be able to ask the questions we need to ask, because I don't even know how big this thing is.
So, are you voting on the, uh, the goals on the 30th or the 7th?
Yes, on the 7th.
Just the timeline to the goals, right?
Just the timeline.
Did you already voted the votes?
Right, just the timeline. So, it's just kinda like tie it up with a bow, we're done, moving on.
If we want the chiefs of police to be at that meeting, we should probably notify them as soon as we can.
Yeah, so I'll let Superintendent Clenchey.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna talk to Alita about that tomorrow. We'll, we'll make sure that we send something out.
Okay.
But, but actually Donna may already have, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Can, can I just, uh, so, on the next, we're meeting on the 17th for financial committee and I think that Brooke has asked to have on the agenda, um, some of the reports.
Yeah.
Specifically that we'd like to potentially have, uh, put out. If we agree upon that, we vote that we'd like to move this forward to the school committee. Can we actually bring that forward on the 30th, so that we can vote those as a school committee, so that it gives two extra weeks for the administration to start putting those together?
Yeah, why don't you and I touch base on that? Let me see what the list is and if it's quick hits or if it's only, yeah, we can put them on. What I don't, what I'm hoping doesn't happen is we end up in a 20, 30-minute discussion. I'm just worried about that.
It, it.
But if you don't.
It shouldn't be and I, I think you could table it then, if that's the case, that's gonna happen, right, so, you know.
Yeah, if that's gonna expedite the work for you and Pat and Superintendent Clenchey, then that's fine. Yeah.
Right, so on the 30th, are we talking about the personnel stuff?
That, that was one of the things that I had said, I, I would prefer to have it come the 30th rather than the December 7th, to be honest with you.
Okay, so.
But, but it's totally up to you, if you wanna.
That's gonna be a discussion. That's not gonna be a quick hit and how's that gonna do for your timing? Okay, we can talk about that one. I mean, we can talk about all of these little ancillary things, but again, the more time that we put on the agenda for anything. So, you know, I may just say, you know, once we get into personnel, it's, you know, the next personnel meeting and, you know, I'll talk to Kathy about this, but it may be, is there a priority that you need one and not everything?
Yeah, well, and I think too, I, I, for my, my own heart, uh, my own sense of convictions here, I feel strongly that we need to protect that 30th for the forensic audit.
Right.
And I really think that as a school committee, if you don't feel that you've had enough time for rich conversation, I think you're gonna walk away feeling not good about it. So, you really wanna protect that time.
Exactly, and the 7th is one week later and so we can talk about that.
That's true too, yeah.
Did John say how much time he's gonna need to actually make the presentation and then how long we're gonna have for Q and A?
Nope, nope. All I know is when I spoke with him, he said, I'm drafting it now, I can be ready for the 30th and then, um, I'm gonna contact him and I'm hoping that Superintendent Clenchey and I can sit down with him and say, what's this look like, right? So, how much time, who's doing what, and so it'll be just orchestrated to the point where we know when he's talking, we know when we're talking. And I'm hoping that we can let him get through his entire presentation, because you know how we are. If we, if we say, I have a quick question, if, we're gonna go down 20 rat holes, just because we all want the information. So, I think we'll be able to get it done. And it may be longer than two hours, but I'm hoping that because we're giving everyone back so much time tonight, you won't be upset if it's more than two hours. Kathy?
I just, just relative to the, um, November 21st Personnel Subcommittee meeting, if we just wanna have a one-item agenda to, to have the conversations, to have, I mean, that is, that's feasible if that works. I know we're not bringing it forward on the 30th, but I would like us to sort of, um, evaluate the time we're spending on personnel, since it's a lot and maybe we can start to come back. If this is the next issue that's germane for us.
Yeah, put it on the subcommittee agenda and.
I'll do it.
Alright.
I moved the agenda?
Jennifer, thank you, five seconds.
Second.
Kathy, elbows in favor. It's unanimous. Thank you all so much. Thank you.
Thank you.